Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you and the candidates for the At-Large Common Council to the 2017 Forum. And I would like to thank the cosponsors of the forum, the Norwalk Hour, CNNA, Norwalk Branch of the NC double A P, and the PTO Council. We'd like to acknowledge the students from the NC N double A C P Youth Group and A I T E in Stamford. Nancy on Norwalk is filming, and the video will be available online. And the town clerk will have Saturday office hours on Saturday, November 4th, 9:00 a.m. to noon, for the purpose of issuing absentee ballots for the election. There is a consolidated ballot and other election information available in the, actually, the side of the room. Thanks to the registrar of voters, Karen Lyons and Stuart Wells. And don't forget the 10th Annual Election Day Food Drive. Bring non-perishable food with you when you vote. And I would like to introduce our moderator for the evening, Lauren Rizzuto.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I'm pleased to be your moderator tonight for the At-Large Council Forum here. The candidates have just drawn randomly in a seating order. I'm going to explain a little bit how the forum will run. We have four tables, you see here, with three candidates at each table. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to a question. The first two questions I will ask, I will ask to all the candidates. They were prepared by the cosponsors. Then we're going to open up questions to the audience. And the way we do that is we have ushers who are waving and in the back, on the sides that have cards and pencils. And you're going to write your question. We ask you to keep the questions general, so that all candidates can answer these questions, and not in any way personal toward any one candidate. The questions will be reviewed by our screeners in the back. And then they will be brought up to me to be asked in the order that we are proceeding. So after a candidate answers a question, his minute is, his or her minute is up, then each candidate has four 30-second rebuttals. So any of you can then respond. Just remember you have four rebuttals. The timers here in the front row will time the candidates and indicate when they have 30 seconds left and that their time is up. Timers, if you can just identify yourselves there. There you go. The ushers have cards. If you don't have cards and you want them, just raise your hand, and they'll come to you. And if you want them to pick up a card, raise your hand again, and they'll come back. By 8:25, we're going to start with closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for closing statement. Yeah. And then, at 9 o'clock, the in-district forums going to start, and those are in specific rooms that are in your brochure, right? The candidate rooms? No? Where can people find out where their in-district forums are?
I gave my list to... That's why you want to give it to us.
We'll make an announcement at the end. Which rooms each district is in?
Lauren?
Any questions?
How much time do we have for an opening statement?
There are no opening statements because there are so many candidates. So it is just starting with the first two prepared lead questions. Okay, we have the district rooms. And then, at the end, you'll have a one-minute closing statement. I'm going to announce these at the end, just so that we can get started. So, starting with the first table, with the first person closest to the wall, which would be Enrique. This question was prepared by the League. Why are you running?
Why am I running? Well, it's my second time running. I lost first time, but I still want to run and represent Norwalk, because I do love Norwalk, and I've lived here long enough and volunteered so much, and I'd rather serve the council than not do anything during the evening time.
Hi, my name is Doug Stern. I'm running At-Large, and I love Norwalk, and I love contributing to it. I'm an attorney by profession. My offices are here in Norwalk. I volunteer. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Family and Children's Agency here in town. And for the last two years, I've been proudly serving on zoning, which has been such, so worthwhile, and just so personally rewarding, and I just feel so good to be part of that team. And the breadth of what the Common Council does means that there's even more of that for me to get. And very proud to be a nominee and happy to be here.
Mr. Suda?
Hi, I'm Mark Suda. Well, I've served this city for 24 years on the police department. So now, during those 24 years, I've worn several hats throughout this community. Now, I would love to put the hat on of a councilman. I'm running for many reasons. One of the big things that I want to do, I understand, is a salary, a small salary for the Common Council. It's not much. But one of my, one of my things is, I want to bring the community closer. And one of the biggest things, I'm going to take my, my pay. I'm not going to take it. I'm going to bring, put that back into the school system. I'm going to grab an SRO into schools. I'm going to take, have the SRO talk to it with the principal, and I'm going to pick a school. So let's just say the first school is Norwalk High School. I'm going to contact the SRO at Norwalk High. They're going to contact the principal, and we're going to pick a class that's done something really important in the community. Whether it's a, it's a community event, if they, if their grades have progressed to that, to such a level. And I'm going to give back and have a pizza party.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. We need to remember to watch the timers in the front row.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Burnett? Same question. Why are you running?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Greg Burnett, and thank you for coming this evening. I've lived in Norwalk for over 25 years, and since coming, moving to Norwalk, I've been committed to service. I think that's what makes the difference in making a great town, each individual somehow, some way, being committed to service. I presently serve as the chairman of the Board of Estiment Taxation. I also serve on the Norwalk Facilities Construction Commission. In previous roles, I was elected to the Board of Education and was appointed to the Board of Health. I think each of those appointments, as well as elected positions, have prepared me to move into the Common Council position and to give value-add to that role. And that's why I'm here today, and I hope you will support my candidacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Loretella, why are you running?
Good evening. I wanted to thank the sponsors, including the League of Women Voters. After 32 years living in Norwalk, I decided that, in order to get things done for the citizens and the businesses, I wanted to give a try at being on the Common Council. I often attend committee meetings, and I think that the Common Council needs to be elevated to the very important role that it plays. I want to see more citizens at committee meetings, because that's where a lot of the business of the city takes place. Of course, we want to work in concert with the mayor's office and with the departments. We should not, no longer be in silos, and I know those efforts to do that are changing. The reason I'm here tonight is because I have, as an environmental consultant, helped various districts and citizens and neighborhoods over time learn how government can be better for them, how to reduce the cost of government by having smarter government. One reason I'm here is I would very much like to open up the charter, so that we have better government.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday, why are you running?
Thank you all for being here. I am a Human Relations Commissioner, appointed by Mayor Rilling. Thank you, sir. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. I served in Korea. I'm currently a classroom volunteer at Cranberry Elementary School, and I've been volunteering for Meals on Wheels for 10 years. I have a 30-year career as an on-air newscaster and sportscaster. I've lived around this country, worked for different radio and TV stations, and there's something special about Norwalk. I really like the diversity of this city, and I've attended many, many Common Council meetings, including committee meetings. And what I want to do is make the best of Norwalk available to all future generations. And I would greatly appreciate your support, and thank you so much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halliday. Mr. Satinelli, same question. Why are you running?
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank you for putting this on. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. My name's Nick Satinelli. I'm currently sitting as a Common Council member, and I'm running for the same reason that I ran in 2015. This is my home. I'm here to represent the constituents here. Candidly, I've grown up in Norwalk. I went to Norwalk Public Schools. I have a home here now. Actually, I work in Norwalk, outside of the, the Common Council. And when you come on, there's a learning curve. So it's, you have a two-year term. In the first year, you are learning. The second year, you're starting in new projects. And I think it really takes a second term to really be more involved, directly address the concerns of your constituents, as they bring things to your attention. The first year, you're, you're learning on how to address those things. You're learning process, protocol, getting through red tape of politics. And I want to run again, because there's still work to be done, and I want to be as effective as possible for everyone that I'm representing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, why are you running?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the other sponsors of tonight, and for all of you for being here tonight. I'm running because, like so many women across the country, over the last several months, I felt that we needed more female voices in government at every level. And I thought that I would get involved here at the city level. I love this city. I've been here for nearly 20 years. My husband and I, sitting right there, moved here because of Norwalk's diversity, and it's what we love about this city. I'm currently serving the, the students of Norwalk as a public school teacher. I've worked at Ponus, and now I'm at Norwalk High School, and it's been my honor and pleasure to serve our children. And I now like the opportunity to step outside of the classroom, as well as staying inside the classroom and serve the people of the city that I love.
Thank you. Mr. Corcello, why are you running?
My parents, who live in the same house I was raised in here in Norwalk, taught me, one of the things you do is you give back to your community. They taught me the value of community service. And over the years, I've served on various boards and agencies, been on the Fair Rank Commission, Oak Hills Authority, Fire Commissioner, YMCA Board of Directors, and some others that you don't want to hear about. But, but two years ago, I decided to run for the Common Council, and I did. And echoing what Mr. Satinelli said, there's a real learning curve. Despite the fact that I had been on some boards before and had been an attorney in town for all these years, there was a lot to learn. And there were sacrifices to be made. A lot of time, an effort goes into it. My family made a lot of sacrifices. Were I not to run again, that would have been wasted. So I don't want to waste it. I'm as motivated as ever, but I think I'm better prepared than ever.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, why are you running?
Well, thank you all for being here. If elected as an At-Large member of the Common Council, I want to be your watchdog to, to guard against anything that threatens to raise the cost of living here in Norwalk, and anything that threatens to diminish the quality of life here in Norwalk. The trouble is that so much of what affects those things in Norwalk emanates not so much from our local government as from what goes on up in the state capital. And I think the Common Council members could be spending more time thinking about that in the future, because that's never been more important than it is now. And that's why I'm running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Bonifant, why are you running?
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Why am I running? Well, the short answer is, it's easy. No, cer- no. I've been serving as a councilman for 14 years, out of the last 20. So I kind of understand the issues. I live around the corner. I've served on every committee on the Common Council, and before that, I was a Human Rights Commissioner, Human Relations Commissioner here in the city of Norwalk. But the real answer is, I totally love it. I have a good time doing it. It's great to contribute to the city, and it's great to be part of the, one of, a lot of the beautiful things that are going on. Some things need fixing, and I'd like to be part of that solution, too. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant. And now we'll move to question number two, and I'm going to start with table number three, just to mix it up a little bit. So starting with Mr. Satinelli. And we'll continue this way, and then go to table one and two at the end. What are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
So, that's a, that's a loaded question. So there's, there's a lot to do at all times, right? So you're, you're listening to your constituents on a regular basis. You get constant emails, so you do have to address things on the fly. But it's kind of a, as I go forward, I was addressing projects that we started that we wanted, that I wanted to continue. Cybersecurity being a major, a major talking point for me right now. It's something that we, I've, I've started in this term that I'd like to continue addressing. I don't think that we're, there's any threats, but it's one of those things where it's, it's an open door, it's, it's ever-evolving, and my background comes in cybersecurity and continuity management. So that's, that's a big piece that I want to continue addressing, along with the everyday topics. There's, there's a lot of topics. It's very difficult to pick one. Every individual has something that they're more passionate about than the other, and truthfully, every one of those individuals needs to have the time to be heard, and all of those topics need to be addressed in a similar way. So broad answer to a very complicated question, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Satinelli. Mrs. Smith, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, I plan to work with the council to continue the very good work that has been done over the last couple of years in terms of revitalizing the city. I'd like to see support for the infrastructure, for the new developments that are going on. I think that Norwalk is poised to become, don't laugh at me, but a very groovy city. There's a lot going on, and, and, and we're just about there, and I've been seeing it happen. So I feel really excited to be a part of that. And the way I plan to do it is to listen to people, to listen to my constituents, and to work. I'm very good at working with other people, and I think that I can bring a positive and fresh voice to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Corcello, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
I think the answer might have been a little different six months ago, but from following what's been going on in Hartford, it seems very obvious, we're not going to get the type of revenue.
Can you just move the microphone? I'm sorry.
Did I lose all that time?
No. Timers, pause.
The answer is a little different than it would have been six months ago. Recently, as we've all seen in news reports, it's very obvious, we're not going to get the type of revenue that we're used to getting from Hartford. So we're going to have to find a way to provide the services that are necessary to provide in this town without that money. And we're going to have to find a way to do it without raising taxes, because a community like this can't be sustained on the backs of homeowners. So the idea is to expand our commercial tax base, which we have been doing, and I think that's, that's what I want to do, is continue to expand our commercial tax base, so that homeowners don't bear the brunt of the financial needs we're going to be facing going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Corcello. Mr. Dunn, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, as Mr. Corcello said, I think most of our problems these days emanate from Hartford. And I think we need to do a better job of keeping, keeping our focus on what our state legislators are doing up there. We need to hold our feet to the fire. We need to assess what they're saying here, as opposed to how they're voting up in Hartford. Because Connecticut is, is in crisis, as most of us know. Jobs are hardly there. The economic growth is hardly there. Connecticut has become a laggard among 50 states in terms of its economic health. And when, if, if Connecticut goes down the tubes, no one should imagine that we're not going to feel the consequences in Norwalk. So...
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
I'm going to...
You could finish. I'm sorry.
I'm going to do the job by listening and learning.
Thank you. Mr. Bonifant?
Thank you.
What are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, I just had an opportunity to have an interview with the people that are putting together the master plan, and it's sort of like, it's the same question. Their, their, their focus is, what do you want to see Norwalk look like in the future? And I want to be part of what helps shapes that. But my focus on that was a little different, is how many people do you want here when you're all done? When you've built it out? How many more apartments do you want? How much more traffic do you want? There has to be a balance between vibrancy and getting choked so much that you can't move in the town. Right now, we have to build another school, and in order to do that, we have to give up a park in South Norwalk, maybe, or maybe not, depending if the federal government says yes or no. So all the population comes with strains on your services, and now we're short on school places. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Santiago?
Yes.
What are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, I look at Norwalk as a diamond in the rough, and with the help of the community, we can make sure that diamond shines all the time. Even if we don't get the money from, up from Hartford, we could find revenue here in Norwalk without kicking out the old timers, or people who've been here forever. We could make everything work out, but it'll take time. It's just not going to happen overnight. But with that said, I would be happy to talk to people and take in what they have to say to see how we could make that happen, and make Norwalk shine again.
Thank you. Mr. Stern, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, I think that the, the biggest challenges and opportunities facing Norwalk are going to be in the form of zoning and land use and the quality of our education. And in many ways, those two things are connected to one another. As development continues, there will be more tax revenues from our grant list, and I hope my leadership will steer as much of that possible towards improving the quality of our education system.
Thank you. Mr. Suda, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, we can all sit up here and say, we're going to cut taxes, education 100 percent. But I think if we start at the bottom, and if we stop the unnecessary spending in the city, I think that would accumulate a lot of money for a fund. Some of the things I want to see, would love to do in the future, is start either a Boys and Girls Club, or like a YMCA-type community center for all of Norwalk, not just one part of Norwalk, but bring all the kids together. Could be an after-school thing, it could be a sports thing, it could be, it could be almost anything. We could make it. Another thing, I'd like to start a tax reform for the veterans. I believe the veterans are, are a huge part of, of Norwalk, and the history of Norwalk. And I'd also like to implement, well, not implement, but just keep, keep the senior tax reform going as well.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Mr. Burnett, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Yes, thank you. Our city has a lot of great plans for growth and expansion, and my focus will be continuing to see those plans to the very end. There's some areas, though, that I think we need to focus on, that I think are very important, such as traffic, and how do we handle that? There's studies that are going on, so I would look, work closely to get that key expert input, and see how we can implement programs and processes to make sure our traffic situation is at a minimum in terms of impact. There's some other key areas that are dear to me, such as part, continuing to partner with the Board of Education, especially in the area of our special education, and making sure that we have programs here in Norwalk that support that group of students that need those services. And finally, our public way of life, public safety, ensuring that it's safe here in Norwalk for all Norwalk residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Loretella, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, one thing that I think is so important is to reconnect the taxpayers and citizens with their government in proactive ways. The way I would do that is to begin having brown-bag breakfasts and, and special forums that educate both the public and the political people, as well as the officials, so we can begin a dialogue. I want to make sure that we have proactive, not reactive, government. So when some of the people up here say that they want to continue what the city has done, I think a lot of good things are beginning. But some of those things have not been done with enough due diligence to make sure we don't have traffic jams. And I want to make sure that we do our homework upfront, front-end loaded, and we make sure we have forums where people have a place at the table, that the citizenry and the businesses that are affected by our decision-making are not shut out of the process. As a female, I want to make sure that we have more women in the White House, so to speak. I love you men, but I think women have a special way of doing their due diligence, and I think we could use a little more feminine mystique. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Halliday, finally, what are you planning to do, and how do you plan to accomplish it?
Well, I'm a senior citizen on fixed income, so obviously I'm concerned with the property tax. Hopefully, we could, you know, address that. Also, I think the concern, we're a population of 88,000 right now, and with the growth, Norwalk is a hot place right now. There's a lot of people coming, coming in, a lot of construction going on. I feel that does put a strain, or will put a strain, possibly future police, fire, and schools. So I think we need to be careful and look at that development. The city of Stamford has a slogan, "The city that works." But if it takes 45 minutes to go from one section of the city to the other, I'm not so sure that that is working all that well. So we have to be careful on how we plan that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halliday. Now, we're going to start with audience questions, and we're going to address one question per table. Each candidate from a table will answer the same question. Since we've had already some discussion brought up about development, and I have multiple questions here about development, I'm going to start with table number four with Mr. Corcello. What are your thoughts regarding the impact of continued development? And do you believe, I'm combining two questions here, because I think we can talk about both. Do you believe planning and zoning?
Time?
What?
Do I get W. by the time?
Right. You know what? I'll stick with one. I'll give the second one to another table to continue the dialogue. And you could, no, that's all right. You're, you're good. We could use our rebuttals to continue the conversation. So what are your thoughts regarding the impact of continuous development on rental values, city services, and schools?
Well, the, you have to be cognizant of your development, your schools keeping abreast of the development. Therefore, perhaps one- and two-bedroom homes, because those, those type of residents are less likely to tax our schools. Likewise, we have to make sure that our infrastructure stays up, stays apace with the development. But essentially, it's, you know, what the development will do is it will bring tax revenue, which will enable us to provide infrastructure that will, that will support it. And if the tax revenue's there, we can expand our schools to the extent necessary to deal with the increased residential development. The fact that people want to come live here, and the fact that developers who understand the market recognize there's a demand to live in Norwalk, I think is very positive.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn, same question. What are your thoughts regarding the impact of continuous development on rental values, city services, and schools?
It's a very interesting question, and, and it needs a lot of thought. We see an awful lot of rental properties going up. At the same time, we see a lot of people leaving Norwalk because they can't afford the property taxes. We see a lot of our kids graduating from high school and going to college and never coming back to Connecticut, or leaving Connecticut, leaving Norwalk, because they can't find opportunities for their career, given the lack of job growth in Connecticut. And we see a lot of our friends and neighbors leaving Norwalk to follow their kids wherever they go. So it's an interesting question, the difference between... So it's an interesting question, the difference between rental properties and the higher the property taxes go, the less opportunity they have.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Bonifant, what are your thoughts regarding the impact of continued development on rental values, city services, and schools?
Well, I believe you're talking about the apartments that are being built, or are you?
The apartments.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Well, I think it's time to hit the pause button and see what the impact is of the things that are already in the hopper and on, that are already being, the plans that have been submitted. I'm sorry. We have to realize you're building places where there's no place to play, but there will be kids there. People say, "No, no, it's all millennials, young couples," and then they live there for a couple of years and they move out. Sooner or later, there'll be a lot of kids in those apartments, and they have no place to play, and they'll be running around streets with nothing, unless they have a program someplace else. These neighborhoods, there's no play area or parks that are being part of these apartment They're very expensive, and I don't know how long people can stay there, but all I can say is, people do want cars. Don't say that none of these people want cars, they're just going to walk around and take public transportation. They all want cars, and there's going to be a lot of traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant. So do we have Ms. LaRocella 30 seconds?
One thing I wanted to make sure with the apartment development is that we're not giving away our industrial zones for, and it is known that in industrial use, clean industry, not the old dirty industry, is a very good way of balancing our tax base so that residential homeowners and landlords are not given the burden of it. So I want to make sure that before we rush to having more apartments, more condos, that we look and make sure we're preserving our industrial zones. We hardly have any left. There are some that need a second look. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to use a 30 seconds? Sure, Mr. Suda.
Sure, I think, what do the citizens of Norwalk want? I mean, we, Norwalk is the biggest, I like to call it the biggest town in Connecticut. So do the citizens want apartments with every kind of industrial, every kind of restaurant chain, what else in our town? Or do we want to keep this, the biggest town in Connecticut? With all these tax incentives, who really wins here? I don't, my taxes don't go down. I don't think anybody else's taxes go down.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? No. Okay, so moving to the next question and to table number one with Mr. Santiago. Should Norwalk have a city manager? Why or why not?
I think we should have a city manager. Helps out, keep everything productive, keep the wheels moving. The mayor's office can't do everything, the city council can't do everything on a daily basis. The only full-time position should be, is the mayor. So city manager would be a full-time position that should keep the wheels moving with the help of the city council, the help of the citizens. It should help out, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Mr. Stern, should Norwalk have a city manager? Why or why not?
I don't believe that Norwalk needs a city manager. I think once proper lines of communication between all the various departments are in place and certain, and teamwork and civic engagement, when all of that takes place properly, all of the sorts of things that people, when they complain wanting a city manager, I think those will go away very shortly.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Should Norwalk have a city manager? Why or why not?
I don't think a city manager's going to hurt us. I think it's just going to help us. Obviously, with state funding, where we're at right now, the mayor's got a tough job, and I wouldn't want to do that job right now. It's a hard job. Any help that the mayor can get, or the council can get, as well as his assistant, I think it's a home run.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Would anyone else like to weigh in on the city manager question? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to. I really don't support a city manager. I think that city managers, there's nationwide searches for someone at that level, and I don't necessarily think that that person is going to be invested in the quality of life for the people of Norwalk. I want to make sure that our citizens vote on who is running their city, and I don't really see the city manager's going to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Carcello, and then Mr. Dunn.
I believe in democracy, having your government, the individual who runs it, being beholden to the people who elect them. By taking it away from that and giving it to a professional rather than somebody who's responsive to the electorate is against the form of government that I was raised to understand we followed.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
I agree with Mr. Carcello. I don't see the point of a city manager, considering that the city manager is not elected. Whoever has responsibilities such as those invested in the city manager ought to be accountable to the people. And we already have a mayor, he's elected, he's accountable to the people, I think that's sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. First, Mr. Halliday, and then Mr. Bonifant?
Yeah, I do not believe that the city needs a city manager, so I would vote no on that. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bonifant, then, Mr. Burnett?
Well, I think everybody alluded to the same point, that it would be nice to have like somebody who knew, who studied professional urban planning and things like that, but we have mayor, every mayor I've ever served with has figured it out within one month or less, and they have plenty of advisors as far as like how to run a city. And if you have a city manager and you don't like the way things are going, you can't vote them out. They'll have a contract and they'll be there, so, you know, there's two sides to that story. Thank you.
Mr. Burnett?
Yes, there have been, there have been some communities where a city manager has been very successful. However, if we put the trust and confidence in our elected mayor that he or she would reach out to whatever expertise is needed in any particular area to ensure we have the proper research and information to make informed decisions, then our present structure would be more than enough to continue to move our programs and projects forward with the right information and expertise.
Thank you. Ms. LaRocella, you're going to use another 30 seconds? Okay.
I was inspired.
Right.
I'm not necessarily opposed to a city manager, but only after a lot of discussion and research. I actually want us to pivot to the point of personnel management. One thing that I want to make sure is that we make sure for our senior people, especially our directors of departments, that we have true national searches, and we have citizens that sit on the evaluation board, especially those citizens that are affected. We currently have some open important seats, health director, grants manager, and recreation and parks director. Those are really important seats that need better review.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Okay, starting with table number two with Mr. Burnett, the next audience question is, how would you support seniors?
Well, hoping to one day be one. I truly feel it's important that we keep our seniors in the forefront of all the decisions that we make. My mentor is 93 years old, so I depend on his advice and counsel, having walked the road that I'm getting ready to walk. And we should treat our seniors in the same manner, to ensure that they're in a comfortable environment, and not pushed away to some separate part of the city, but embrace the city, be involved in the city. You know, have them involved with maybe the schools in some way, so they can share their lifelong journey and expertise and wisdom that they've been fortunate and blessed to have all these years. So we need to embrace them and ensure that they feel part of this great community.
Thank you very much. Ms. LaRocella, how would you support seniors?
Well, I know many of the seniors, some of whom are in this audience, are the busiest people I know, but they've developed expertise. So what I would do is see where we can fit them into helping our city council. Often, I've suggested there be an internship on different committees because we don't have enough staff and we can't afford to hire more staff, but we have expertise in the seniors. Secondly, as far as tax control, one thing I think that's very important is we have a budget-making season that's starting this month. The time has come for us to make sure we have zero-based or outcome-based budgeting, because that's going to be a way of controlling, truly controlling, the taxes. I know we have some senior tax compensation, and I think that's a good thing to have, but it doesn't go far enough. Lastly, I know the senior center is terrific, they're a wonderful resource, there are a lot of really wonderful volunteer organizations that should tap in, not only to the millennials, but also the seniors who have stored up 80 or 70 or 90 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. LaRocella. Mr. Halliday, how would you support seniors?
Well, since I am one, if you put me on the common council, that would be very nice. Obviously, the property taxes are, you know, a problem. I do agree that, you know, seniors do have a wealth of experience, and I try to do that in my volunteering. It's the most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life, helping people. I work with the students at Cranberry Elementary School, and to me, it's just the most rewarding thing I've ever done in my life. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halliday. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this question? Mrs. Smith, then, Mr. Bonifant?
Yeah, I would. Mr. Halliday, thank you for your service to our kids. My kids went through Cranberry, and I know the kids appreciate it, the teachers appreciate it, and I appreciate it. I'd like to see us boost our tax relief, property tax relief, in some way for our seniors. I know that that's tricky, taxes are always tricky, but I've seen firsthand what trying to pay property taxes has done to my in-laws, my elderly in-laws, and I'd just like to see what we could do about that. I think it's worth exploration.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant.
Thanks. I just wanted to mention that seniors living in a single-family home are the best people you could have in your town. They don't make school babies, they don't, they don't, they don't call the cops, and they don't make a lot of garbage, okay? They're the best ones. But I just want to say that, but we do, a lot of people here alluded to the tax relief. We actually do go by the guidelines by the state of Connecticut and give them every tax break that we can, up to the point that we're allowed to. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Satinelli?
Yes, thank you. I do want to touch on the senior tax relief as well. I sit on the committee and part, I'm part of that team that expanded senior tax relief currently. If I was to be elected again, I would continue to expand that within, within the realms of the policy. I think we should protect our senior citizens as much as possible. And I did mention team, everything that we talk about, it's a team effort, we work across the table to make sure that, to move these initiatives forwards, we are effective. And this is, this one being, one of the ones that it ends up being, I think, a no-brainer, but we need to make sure that we're protecting the citizens as much as possible.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to question six, starting with table number three, Mr. Satinelli again. What should the city's priorities be regarding the Walk Bridge project?
Okay, so this one, this one is a, this is one of those things where we have to move with caution. There's definitely a lot to be viewed with the Walk Bridge project, there's a lot that's going to, it is going to impact the citizens, but there's a little bit that, or quite a bit that's outside of our realm of control. So this is, this is one of those things where we need to make sure that we're constantly aware of what's going on, how the citizens may potentially be impacted. We need to stay informed by, there's been quite a bit of information that's been dispersed on the Walk Bridge project and how it may potentially impact us. We need to continually monitor that and make sure that is going to be suitable for the citizens, environmental impact, traffic impact, and so forth. And in this instance, it's going to be a lot more of addressing the citizens' concerns as they come up, as opposed to drastic change in direction at any point in time. It's something that is, it's, it's coming, and we need to make sure that there's, we're doing right by the people that it is impacting.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I don't think anyone's really happy about the Walk Bridge project, but it is something that we have to deal with. It does seem to be that we only have a certain amount of control, there's a lot that's out of our hands, but I think probably the most important thing that we can do is keeping our citizens informed. It's sometimes very hard to get information. I myself, you know, I'm not involved in all of, haven't been, anyway, involved in a lot of the discussions about it, not being in city government yet. But trying to find the information about it has been challenging, so I want, I think that that's probably the most important thing, is getting the public informed, getting information out there and having more public forums.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Carcello?
I think we need to do, continue what we've been doing, and that is stay in communication and be very vigilant with the DOT as this, as this project progresses. There's no question it will have somewhat of an adverse impact on Norwalk, and there's no question that it's the DOT that is providing the impetus for it, and Metro North will benefit from it. I would like to see us stay in communication and leverage, leverage this project so that we can get the DOT and Metro North to help us put a train station in Wall Street.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, I'm very concerned that the city government has relinquished too much authority to the State Department of Transportation. They seem to be driving the train, so to speak, on this question. And they're heading for the vastly most expensive, most disruptive option available, that is a huge lift bridge that will take five or six years to complete, that will just destroy downtown Norwalk for long periods of time. And I don't see the necessity for it. I'm in favor of a fixed bridge that'll be low-cost and won't be so disruptive.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? To question number seven, starting with table number four, Mr. Carcello. Do you believe planning and zoning processes and regulations need to be changed? If so, what changes would you support?
Well, I see we've recently hired a city planner. Years ago, the planning and zoning were divided. I know there's a lot of talk about reuniting them. I have not heard a consensus on exactly what the difficulties are, and I'm not sure that an extensive overhaul is necessary. I do serve on the ordinance committee. If there were a blue-ribbon panel that was appointed to study the issues with zoning, I would certainly look at changing some ordinances.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
Well, I just completed a term on the planning commission myself, and I often wondered if it wouldn't be better to be combined with zoning. I don't know, it's a complicated question. It would depend on the composition of the combined planning and zoning board. But I often felt on the planning commission that we were too much of a rubber stamp and our decisions weren't being paid much heed to.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Bonifant, do you believe planning and zoning processes and regulations need to be changed? If so, what changes would you support?
Okay, the planning and zoning was combined a long time ago, and then they split them up, somewhat under the guise that there was not enough time, there were so many zoning issues that they never had the time for planning, so they split them up. It was also, it was also a political way to get rid of everybody in one shot and start again, but that's, that's neither here nor there. It seems that we change the rules for individual projects, and we have to stick to our rules. And we also have to have enforcement. We really need to, you know, I don't know, some, there seems to be, one of the complaints around here is illegal apartments. Now, are people living in attic and basement apartments, things like that affect the quality of life when you come home and you can't get a parking place in front of your own home because there's 15 people living in another house nearby? So that's a big complaint I hear. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this question? Ms. LaRocella?
Well, I spend a lot of time looking at land use, decision-making. I sometimes help people learn how to speak truth or speak to their land use board. So the thing that I want to make sure is that we have a much more balanced enforcement process that is, that where the citizens don't have to bring up violation after violation. that where the citizens don't have to bring up violation after violation for years and years, suffering in their quality of life, like we saw with Emmett Carden. I want to make sure that we do not combine, recombine planning and zoning. I sat through many P&amp;Z meetings, and the thing is, there's just too much work for zoning. If they're led properly with the staff and the staff are directed properly, I don't think you'll have an issue. They'll spend time with the POCD. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Okay, going to table one with Mr. Santiago. Would you support in paneling a charter revision commission, and if so, what issues should a charter revision commission consider for review?
I'll tell you the truth, I haven't read the charter since two years ago. But I do know this hasn't been, there hasn't been a revision in a while, and we put, there was a vote to redo it, and I don't think it passed. But it should be revised. You got me on that question?
What issues should it consider for review?
What should be considered? I'm not sure what has, what should be considered. There's a few things that, I can't remember exactly what they were. There has to be, we look, we looked at and reviewed soon. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
I think the charter commission could be helpful in getting more civic engagement on the topic. I was in favor of all of the changes that were proposed on the ballot last time. I think that it does make sense for the mayoral term to change. I think it does make sense for the salaries to be tied to a different number. And yes, I think that those are all fertile, fertile topics to look into, and the commission could very well be the way to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Suda, would you support in paneling a charter revision commission, and what issues would you consider for review?
Last time, I did not support it. I believe it's, it's up to the citizens of Norwalk. If, if all the citizens, they voted last time, it did not pass. So, obviously, the citizens themselves don't want a charter revision right now. If they did, maybe that's something we could put on the ballot next time. As far as salaries, on a council or a commission, I'm a firm believer that you should give back to your city. That's what I'm doing. Again, I'm not going to take my salary. I'm going to put it back into the Board of Ed through the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on this question? Ms. Lauricella, this is your last 30-second rebuttal?
I buy a vowel.
Just letting you know. No, okay. Mr. Corcello, would you like to weigh in on this?
Sure. Essentially, revising the charter is amending the constitution that a town has. It is not something that should be done every couple of years or every year. This year, or this past year, we had some pretty interesting issues that had been on the table for a long time. There was a very competent bipartisan charter revision commission appointed. The matter went to the electorate, and the electorate turned it down. So, the electorate spoke, but I don't see an imminent need to reconvene a charter revision commission in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday?
I know the citizens of Norwalk turned it down, but I would be in favor of a four-year term for mayor. I think Norwalk is a big enough city, and looking around the state of Connecticut, most of the other big cities have four-year terms, and it costs money to run elections. And I just feel I would be in support of a four-year term for mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
The citizens of Norwalk did voice their opinion as it relates to the charter revisions. However, I feel at some point, we should and need to look at the four-year term for the mayor. It's a very difficult job, and to allow a mayor to come into that role and establish a strategy, a strategic plan, and have the opportunity to implement that plan, the four-year term allows him to move forward in that proper direction.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, moving to question number nine, starting with table number two with Mr. Burnett. What is your vision for improving the Wall Street area?
Well, being a connoisseur of fine foods, I would love to see additional small businesses have the opportunity to call the Wall Street area home and give them an opportunity to grow, and whatever service that they provide in terms of just bringing energy and activity to the Wall Street area. Presently, presently, there are some restaurants and small businesses there, but clearly, there's room for growth and expansion. But I would like to see that first go to small businesses to give them the opportunity. It's a, it's a key area for Norwalk, and we need to make sure that we keep a focus on that growth and ensure that it's not left behind as we continue to grow.
Thank you. Ms. Lauricella, what is your vision for improving the Wall Street area?
Well, the Wall Street area is one of my favorite areas. I lived right up the street at 132 Main Street for about 10 years when I first moved to Norwalk. My vision is that we focus on the Norwalk River. I'm the founding president of the North River Watershed Association, and the gateway to the harbor is an economic development magnet. I want to make sure we look at that train station and work with our state representatives and our federal folks to make sure we have the money to really consider that station. I want to make sure we have facade improvement incentives, because as we know, there are some beautiful architecture from before the flood in 55 that really deserve to be improved upon. I also want to make sure there's parking that is user-friendly, and I guess I missed the opening of the new facade on the Yankee Doodle Bridge. But lastly, the library complex. I want to make sure that that is the central point for the Wall Street area because of the fact that every society that is improving itself has a great library, and I know we all want that to be a hub for community.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday?
I agree with Mr. Burnett. I think the small business increasing in Wall Street would be really, really good. And I also support, if it could be worked out financially, for a Wall Street train station. I think that would be a great thing, and hopefully, that would improve the Wall Street area. I have friends that live in Stanford, and they always ask me, they say, "Norwalk, where is downtown?" And I'm wondering if the new, when the new mall opens in October of 2019, if that's going to be the new downtown. So, I think we have to be concerned about Wall Street, and hopefully, we can improve that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this question? Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I think that Wall Street, revitalizing Wall Street is critical to the success of our city. It's going to bring everything together, and I think that, you know, the idea, the mayor's idea of making Norwalk a walkable, bikeable city, this is key in order to make that happen. I'd like to see, I agree with Mr. Burnett, we need small businesses. I'd like to see an independent bookstore. The city's longing for a bookstore, an independent bookstore, cafes, restaurants, a farmer's market, and of course, the train station. Parking has to be addressed, but I really think that's key.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Dunn, and then Mr. Suda.
I think it's obvious that the single most important thing we could do for the Wall Street area is the reopening the Metro North train station. It would be a magnet for all the good things, all the good things that we've also talked about here, the businesses, the cultural and amenities, the library, everything, shops. They would all grow exponentially if they had that train station.
Thank you. Was Mr. Bon, was Mr. Suda, then Mr. Bonifant? Sorry. Thank you.
I'd like to revitalize Wall Street. One of the things I'd like to do is propose that we run a Live at Five event, such as in Stanford. That's a very big economic grossing event. I believe we could take any and all proceeds and put that back into Wall Street. You're going to attract people down there. You're going to attract small businesses to come out, serve their food. You got the river right there. If a train station was right there, they could walk right off. And we could put all that money, and I would love to put a teen center or a community center right downtown on Wall Street. Thank you.
Mr. Bonifant?
Thank you. Everyone here alluded to the fact that you need something to do down there. You need attractions, whether it's shopping or entertainment or something. You need things to do to bring people down there. The other thing, we have to learn our lesson that Poco Project is an albatross, and it's slowing down the whole development down there. We have, the city meets its end of the bargain all the time. Every time we give something, we gave that developer a parking lot for a dollar. And when it, when they failed, and they couldn't come through on their end, when we wanted it back, he said, "Yeah, it's $3 million bucks, because I own it." All right?
Thank you.
Learned your lesson. Sorry.
No problem. Okay, moving to question number 10, starting with Mr. Satinelli. What do you feel is the city's biggest challenge, and how do you propose to tackle it?
So, there's, one of the challenges I think that we will always need to address is the development of the city, and one of the questions that we already addressed was the, how we're going to manage the continuation of the growth of the city. Part of that, and I think one of the biggest topics that, that has come up, is developing the schools and making sure that we're producing facilities for the education of our young. And as the city expands, how are we going to continue to manage that? So, I think one of the biggest topics going forward is to make sure that all the, the facilities that we're building and developing for the students, for the students of Norwalk, progress in the right manner, and we're going to continue addressing the development of the city in the best way possible.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, what do you feel is the city's biggest challenge, and how would you propose to tackle it?
I think our biggest challenge is unity. Unity of our people, unity of our districts, and making sure that we're taking care of everyone, that all working-class people, all low-income people. I think it's really important that we engage with people of South Norwalk and listen to their needs and what they, what we can do to just bring the whole city together. Yeah, we're, you know, District A, and District B, and District C, and District E, you know, but, but we're all one, and I'd like to work towards that. I think that by listening to constituents, to hearing what their needs are, and really caring, I think that we can transcend and transform our city.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this question? Okay, going to table four, Mr. Corcello. What specific improvements would you recommend to ensure public authorities, such as housing, parking, water pollution control, Oak Hills, et cetera, are reviewed periodically for relevance, goal-setting, and effectiveness?
Just a quick question.
This is a leak-prepared question. By the way, I've gone back to the leak questions because we've gone through all the audience questions. So, if anyone else has questions to put forward, please send them to your ushers.
Okay. With regard to parking, there is no question, we've got many parking issues in this town. Recently, there was a task force appointed for the very purpose of studying the parking issues in various parts of town, leaving no stone unturned. Should, should we have more municipal parking? Should we go to private parking? I think that's the right way to study it. It's a large, comprehensive problem, and it needs to be addressed in a comprehensive, studious manner. Oak Hills, first of all, I don't, Oak Hills is one of the best marketing tools this city has. People from out of town, people who rent and are thinking of buying, go there, they see that course, they're amazed at the beauty, the condition that it's in. It's a very, very nice facility. It does have some economic, you know, some financial issues, largely with the ability of the restaurateur to be able to pay the rent so that the course can reimburse the city for the money it loaned it. And that does get reviewed periodically. They have a very competent authority running the golf course, who do come to the council and to the city and report to them regularly.
Thank you, Mr. Corcello. Mr. Dunn, what specific improvements would you recommend to ensure public authorities are reviewed periodically for relevance, goal-setting, and effectiveness?
Well, all I can say is, it sounds like a very good question, and worth thinking about. But I have not thought about that, and, but I will.
Thank you.
That was deep.
Mr. Bonifant?
Well, first off, authorities were all under city departments at one time. Oak Hills was under Parks and Rec. The parking authority might have been under Public Works. But authorities are a nice way of saying, "We're keeping our money," all right? So, we don't have to go back to the city every, every year and beg for it back to run our budget. So, the authorities keep their money and, and in theory, pay their bills and any loans that come. But the city is, you, the taxpayer, are the ultimate cosigners for all their notes, all right? If the Maritime Center, who never paid anything back on that building, you paid it back, okay? At least the Oak Hills Authority is trying. They, they make the newspaper more often, but at least they're trying, and they're only coming up a little short. But we, we do put council people on every authority just to look out for the city's interest, which ultimately, you will pay back if they don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this? Mr. Suda?
I think the parking problem in South Norwalk is single-handedly pushing the small business out. I've talked to several business, small business owners in South Norwalk, and that's their biggest complaint. We need to help them and keep them here. Washington Street is starting to become like Wall Street. So, we need to, we need to revisit the parking authority and its system. As far as Oak Hills, I think if we put a driving range in, that will bring a positive, a positive cash flow into Oak Hills. That way, it could help out and bring a small business in to run the restaurant, and it would also help them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Mr. Santiago. With Norwalk being such a diverse city, how do you plan on embracing that diversity and cultivating it when it comes to housing and positions on commissions?
Well, I'm involved with Latinas United, Connecticut, and we try to reach out to the community. I also work with the homeless shelters. So, I think us as a community being more involved in our, with neighbors and our community, helping out minorities or just people in general, forget about ethnicity, just people in general, and loving thy neighbor type of thing. We should be okay. But we shouldn't just say, oh, sorry. We should be diverse and just be kind to our neighbors and reach out for the help in hand. If anyone needs help, you can call me, and I'll try to help you out in any way I can. And I don't think there's a big diversity problem here in Norwalk. I work at the hospital, so I don't see anything at all. And the police department, I've done the Citizens Academy, and they work very well with the police, with the community outreach programs.
Thank you very much. Mr. Stern, with Norwalk being such a diverse city, how do you plan on embracing that diversity and cultivating it when it comes to housing and positions on commissions?
Well, Norwalk is diverse. It's getting more diverse, and that's a very good thing. And I think one of the ways we embrace this change is by being as civically involved as we can, by interacting with as many people, as many variety of backgrounds as we can. And an end result of that should be female and minority candidates participating on commissions and boards to adequately represent the, the interests of the districts that they, that they live in. It's, the people coming out and participating couldn't be more valuable in a volunteer role or a more formal role, like running for something. So, I think there are good things ahead on the issue of diversity in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Suda?
Well, I grew up in, I grew up and went to school here. Sort of diversity level at the schools is invaluable. As far as getting on boards and stuff like that, I think it would be our job as council members to actively go out, and if there's a, if there's a board that we feel that a minority would, would sit better on as a head of that board, it's, I think it'd be our job to go out and recruit a minority for that position. I think getting people involved is the best thing that... I think getting people involved is the best thing for Norwalk of all walks of life, and I look forward to working with such people. What was the second part of that question?
When it comes to housing and positions on commissions, how would you embrace diversity and how would you cultivate it?
As far as the housing, like the Housing Authority, I think the Housing Authority is doing a fantastic job right now. I'm in some of the housing properties in Norwalk, and it's clean. Crime is down. Thank you.
Ms. Lortella, this is, I believe, your fourth, yes?
Okay, as far as diversity in housing, I think we have to look again at our zoning code because of the fact that there's a lot of issues where we have industrial-abutting residential, and there's not the enforcement we would like. So that changes up the diversity. As far as diversity on boards and commissions, I think we have to look at not only people of color, but also women. And I've actually checked to see how many women are on some of, especially the power boards, like the zoning commission. We have one person. I want to let you know that Chapter 115 of our code is a permanent commission on the status of women that I would like to see revived so that we can make sure that women of color, as well as women, are well represented on our boards and commissions and authorities.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday then, Mr. Burnett?
Well, Norwalk is a very diverse city, and that's what attracts me to it. In working with Cranberry School students, I had, last year, the teacher asked me to work with a Spanish-speaking girl, and she, with English and reading comprehension, and I worked with her on a one-on-one basis. And at the end of the school year, I got a beautiful letter she handed me from her mother saying that I made such a difference in this girl's life, and she really, really thanked me. So to me, that was very rewarding, and, you know, helping one child at a time, that was good.
Thank you.
Using the term diversity, it has to be more than just a buzzword. It has to be something that is ingrained within our strategic plan in everything that we do. It's easy to say that Norwalk is a diverse town, but when we look at our projects, our interactions within our schools, within our neighborhoods, if we're not including the whole idea of diversity in terms of the value of diversity, then we're failing our citizens.
Thank you. So starting, back into audience questions, starting with table number two, Mr. Burnett, we're going to start with you on this question. Can you please share an issue that you disagree with your party about?
Clock doesn't start till I start talking, okay? Well, there's a lot of things that one person or individual might want to see happen within their party. I would have to say that the biggest issue that I would like to address is building the unity amongst the party and valuing the strength of each individual that's part of the party. And not, and even though I'm speaking on behalf of the Democratic Party, which I'm running on that ticket, as well as the Working Family ticket, I think it goes across the line, even within the Republican Party. I think we all need to be more unified in terms of what the issues are and place our focus on the issues and not what party is on our sleeve. Because that's clearly my position going on to the, hopefully going on to the council, that regardless of what party you're on, let's focus on the issues and the benefitment for Norwalk citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Lortella?
I'm not a shy person, so there are, at times when there are issues that come up within my own party, I attempt to seek out discussion. Not always successful at it, that's one reason I'm running. I would say, as far as what my party, who's in the majority right now, I'm a Democrat, registered Democrat, but I'm a petition candidate, so that tells you something, and that is the charter. As a former president of League of Women Voters, I saw how other leagues in other towns, like Wilton, had a citizen listening session before they decided which issues to discuss in the charter. And I tried and tried to get various council members and others to listen to the wisdom of that, because our charter has not been opened up for umpteen years, decades, and there are some structural issues that really need to be looked at. Stanford changed up their government. There's even phrases in some of our charter that could be changed to help the council just assist zoning and planning to be better situated, but people did not want to listen. So that is what I'm hoping to advocate for, should I be elected.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday, can you please share an issue that you disagree with your party about?
Okay. Just to be specific, are you talking about national Republican or local?
I think it's your interpretation.
I would just say, I'm a very, I'm a liberal Republican, and I don't think the party reaches out enough to minorities. I think we need to do a much, much better job of that. The fastest-growing population, not only in Norwalk, but this country, is the Hispanic-Latino community. And if we don't do a better job on that, we're going to be losing elections big time, in my opinion. So I think reaching out and, you know, including and trying to get, you know, more minority representation into the party, I think that would be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else? Mr. Suda?
Sure.
And Mr. Suda, this is your fourth rebuttal, just letting you know. Or not rebuttal, but 30-second usage.
I'm all new to this politic game, so just coming in and learning about this, I'm learning, trying to learn a lot real fast. But the biggest problem I see, this is Norwalk. This is a small, this is the city of Norwalk, we're a town, the biggest town, and we need to work together. Republican, Democrat, if I was on this council, it'd be, I grew up, I played football, baseball, basketball, I'm always on a team approach. I believe a bipartisan team together will make this city a great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Yes, Mr. Stern?
I just want to say that serving on zoning, which is an awful lot of work with an awful lot of dedicated people, that as far as I'm concerned, I get along with well, and as far as I'm concerned, I get along well with staff. I've never been curious what political party they belong to. It's nothing that naturally comes up, and it's almost besides the point when you've got real decisions to make and real things to consider.
Thank you. Okay, I think this may be our last question before our closing remarks, going to Mr. Satchinelli's table. Another audience question. How do you plan to learn what your constituents want, such as a small percentage of residents are politically involved?
So I've leveraged a lot of outlets for making sure that I understand what constituents are asking for. So I make sure that I'm regularly available. I have my contact information posted wherever I could possibly post it. It's on the city site and so forth. I'm active on all the social media pages to make sure that I understand what constituents, if they're not directly engaging with me, but they are, there's chatter around, I make sure that I understand what the chatter's around. I make sure that I'm involved with all of the content that comes up through the newspapers and so forth. It's one of those things that it's, that's probably one of the biggest parts of the job, is just making sure that you understand what the constituents are looking for. With everything else inside, that is the most important piece. So making sure that you're accessible, you are hearing the citizens that are coming out to the public forums, and making sure that you're on top of the topics that concern them in pretty much any atmosphere is critical. So if you have ideas while you're here today on how I could be better involved, I'm open to that as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith?
I've learned a lot just being on the campaign trail, knocking on doors and talking to people and hearing what their concerns are. And that I have found, as apprehensive as I was to knock on that first door, it's been incredibly rewarding. And so I would just make sure that I continue to be available if I'm elected, to hear what constituents have to say. My email address will be available, my home phone number, I'll have a Facebook page for you. Social media, I think, is really important in terms of hearing what young people have to say, especially. Being a teacher, I'm constantly getting emails and phone calls from parents, and I'm very accessible, I always answer them. And so if you reach out to me, I'll always respond and do my very best to take care of your issues and get the information that you need.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to weigh in on this question? Mr. Corcello?
I think it's a very good question, because as a councilperson, you have people who come to the public hearings, you have people who actually reach out to you because, of course, your information is available. But they, as you said, those are people who are politically involved, and they represent a very small segment of the total population of Norwalk. That's why it's fortunate, it's a requirement that all council people live in the town. I have an additional advantage, and maybe others do too, but I work here. So 10 hours a day, I'm in the community, and you have to do more than just listen to people who show up at the meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, with that, we are at time for our closing statement. Each candidate will have one minute. We're going to start with table number four, Mr. Corcello. Your closing statement, one minute.
I always go first. We all talk about our Norwalk pedigree. We grew up here, we're, we live here, of course. And that's great, except I'm not sure, now having been on the council for two years, that that really makes you any more qualified. Well, makes you somewhat, it helps. But I think what you need is an open mind, thick skin, and a level head. Because that's what you're going to need. A lot of information comes at you, comes at you very quickly, and you have to keep in mind that your job is to do what's in the best interest of the city of Norwalk. And I think having done this for two years, I think I have a good focus for that, and I'm as qualified as I've ever been. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Dunn?
Well, as far as, as I said at the beginning, by far the most, and this is true as it's never been before, the most, the biggest challenge Norwalk faces is not within Norwalk anymore, it's up in Hartford. And we have to be extremely careful on the common council, that our legislators know what are the people of Norwalk want, and that they are being faithful to the wishes of people in Norwalk and not to, in this case, Governor Malloy, who's been very damaging to the state and our city. If you want, I might suggest that you look at yesterday's op-ed in the paper, which I wrote, which goes into greater detail about that theme. So as I say, you need more watchdogs on the common council, and I will be one for you. And I ask for your vote on November 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Bonifant?
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming out. And you've got five at-large choices in the ballot box, so please save me one. I try to, I try to bring people together and try to tell people to keep your sense of humor, because you can think with a clearer head. I try to, I pride myself on trying to keep protecting the city's assets, because they're yours, and once you give them away, you'll never get them back. And I did want to compliment everybody here at the panel, on the table here, and to tell everybody out here, you do have a good crop of candidates, so good luck to all of them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonifant. Mr. Santiago, your closing statement.
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Got caught on some questions off-guarded there, and I will look into it. If you have questions, be happy to call me up, and I'd be more than happy to talk to you. But I'm more than happy to serve the city of Norwalk. I was born and raised here, so I want to continue keeping Norwalk shining bright, because Norwalk is a great city, and it could be even better with the help of the community and the help of the council and our mayor. So thanks for coming out again. Enjoy your night.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Whatever cynicism that might have engulfed Washington, D.C., and whatever cynicism that may engulf Hartford, there's optimism in Norwalk. You can see it in its development, you can see it in the faces of the people that live here, that enjoy it here. It's an engaged population that cares very, cares a great deal about how it's run, and they get to know the people that are running it. So this is an enormous opportunity for government to do an awful lot of good in the long-term interests of the citizens. And I'm an attorney, I'm a zoning commissioner, I have an open mind, and I think I'd be good serving on the council. And if we can just get our hearts and our heads moving in the same direction, I think that momentum will pick up, and we won't even be able to believe what we can accomplish.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Mr. Suda?
It's very simple. I'm a blue-collar guy. I'm ready to roll my sleeves up and get to work. I'm willing to learn, to listen to not only my fellow councilmen, but also the citizens of Norwalk. I believe that we have to make Norwalk a better place to live, raise a family, and hopefully work here and give back to our community as well. The next council voted in is going to face a very challenging, it's going to be a challenging two years. I believe that I will represent the citizens of Norwalk in a responsible, level-headed manner, just like my motto says, "Norwalk Comes First." That means the citizens, the seniors, the property owners, and the business owners. This truly is a great city. It would be an honor to serve on the council, to vote it in. Let's keep Norwalk the Norwalk that we all know. We want to hold fast to the values that define who we are as the citizens of Norwalk. I ask you for your vote on November 7th, and thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Mr. Suda. Mr. Burnett?
Thank you. I am honored and humbled by the opportunity to serve as your at-large common council position. I view this as an opportunity and a very important privilege, which I take very seriously. It is my goal to continue to serve, as I have done in the past, this great city, and to do whatever I can to continue to improve the opportunities and the growth as we move forward. There have been several people that have come before me who have done some very great things for our city. But this coming election should be based upon who is ready to take the baton and continue to fight the difficult fights and work through the obstacles that will exist. Who is committed to taking the baton and going forward? And who is focused to sing it through to the end? I'm ready, committed, and focused to be your common council person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Ms. Lortella?
I'm going to stand up because I'm getting cramped up here, but also I want you all to see me. Thank you for having this event, and I'm so happy you all came out. As they say, democracy is not a spectator sport. I'm ready to hit the ground running. I've been very active in observing and giving opinions, but also listening to people. I want to make sure that we are an activist society in Norwalk, and I have a five-point plan. I want to open up government by shining a light on democracy. When I looked at the Gulf Tank Farm, City Carding, Grosso Odors, the Premier Firewood Noise and Odors, the BJ's Wholesale, what I did was I joined forces with citizens and neighbors and businesses to try to fight for you, and I'm ready to continue it. I want a proactive, not reactive, government. Life's too short, it's too stressful. We're better than that. We have to do our due diligence and homework. I want a more green and sustainable society in Norwalk. I want to make sure we save a lot of tax dollars by putting lots of solar panels I want to make sure we save a lot of tax dollars by putting lots of solar panels on all of our public buildings. And I hope you'll consider voting for me, 5D, the hanging Chad on the ballot.
Thank you. Mr. Halliday?
Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate it. It's an honor to be running for a common council. I go to a lot of the meetings and been attending for many years. For me, the common council will be a full-time job since I am retired. What concerns me is so many people, you know, this is a local election, and they'll go, "Well, I don't know if I'm going to vote," or something. Before I came to Connecticut many years ago, I grew up in Rhode Island. Your vote does count. We elected a governor in Rhode Island by nine votes statewide. So your vote does count. And if you don't think it does, it really does. So I would appreciate your vote, and I work with people, and I volunteer, and I know I can do a good job for you on the common council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Halliday, and Mr. Satinelli.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone also for coming out tonight. It's... it is a great honor to be running for reelection for common council. I'd like to start by just stating a promise. I promise to do the work. One of the things that you don't consider coming on as a new candidate, as I was in my first term, is there's a lot of work to be done. There's 20-page packets, there's four meetings to five meetings a week. There's a large commitment that's made to it, and my commitment is to the constituents, it's to the people that I represent. So we've had a lot of topics just discussed tonight. There's a ton more topics that are thrown at us on a daily or weekly basis, and it's hard to be the expert on everything, but I promise to reach out to the expert on everything. It's one of the things that needs to be taken to heart. Every decision that's made, every vote that you make, needs to be the best decision and best represent the citizen, and that's what I promise to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mrs. Smith?
I may be new to city government, but I'm smart and I'm a quick study. Norwalk is a remarkable city with extraordinary people, and I will commit myself to working for the people of Norwalk every day. As I have said, I've lived here for nearly 20 years. My children have gone through Norwalk schools. Despite what some people might think the perception of Norwalk schools is, I can assure you, having seen my kids go through the schools and working in them myself, we have an excellent school system, excellent teachers, and we grow our children in an extraordinary way. And I'd like to, you know, continue to do that while working to serve the people of Norwalk. I've been an advocate for children, education, and the environment my whole life. I've organized rallies around those issues that I care about, and I'd like to just have the opportunity to serve you, and I would be honored to do that. I look forward to your support.
Thank you. And I would like to thank all the candidates here tonight for your time. We covered quite a few topics and learned quite a bit about you. I would like to thank the audience for your questions and for coming out today.